Okay.
How are you?
All right. All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Education meeting for USD 290. It is August 10th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. We currently have six board members present. We'll just go ahead and do a roll call vote so folks can know who is here. Linda Alderman here. And go ahead and raise your hand because with the video, we can't tell who's who. Thank you. Chris Cunningham is joining us remotely, but if you want to say here, Chris, he's right over there.
Here.
Julie Dandrio here. Susan Moore.
Here.
Shanda Olmstead is absent right now. She may join us later. Melidia Payne.
Here.
And Harold Wingert.
Here.
Thank you. So we have six board members present this evening. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So, go ahead.
Okay, so it was moved by Susan Moore and seconded by Harold Wingert that we approve tonight's agenda. We'll just go ahead and do all in favor, please raise your hand. Chris? Yes, okay, and so that passes 6-0. We are on to the consent agenda. Dr. Cobb, did you have anything specific to share on that consent agenda?
No, this should all be pretty much.
Okay, is there a motion to accept tonight's consent agenda?
So move?
Okay.
That was moved by Linda Alderman and seconded by Chris Cunningham that we accept tonight's consent agenda. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And that passes 6-0 as well. We do have a few comments from the public tonight that we will go through. So these comments were submitted, I'll read the date they were submitted. We did verify these. Mr. Grell went through and made sure these people are represented correctly and still wish to have their comments read. The first one was submitted on July 26th, submitted by Peola, I'm sorry, Alar Khan, and the comment reads, "The Academy, the American Academy of Pediatric States, quote, 'Remote learning is likely to result in severe learning loss and increased social isolation. Social isolation in turn can breed serious social, emotional, and health issues, child and adolescent physical or sexual abuse, substance abuse, depression, and suicidal ideation,' end quote. Many of these children will not be able to recover from this and the trauma will follow them into adulthood. As a parent, of course, I have some fear of my children getting the virus, but as a school resource officer, it hurts knowing that many children are out there in our community getting abused in different ways, being neglected, wondering where their safe haven, school, will finally open up so they may escape and possibly report their horrible experiences. Let's be a voice for those children, let's open up the schools." And then she lists a website here from npr.org/coronavirus-live updates. And that ends that comment. The next comment was submitted on July 26th, 2020 by Peter Caro. His comment reads, "Two of my five grandchildren attend school in this district, and neither they nor us or the rest of their family should be exposed to contracting this virus by attending in person, not to mention bringing it home to high-risk family members. There is no excuse for subjecting all students and families to a deadly virus. Yes, there are many parents who cannot afford childcare, et cetera, while they are at work, but no one should have to send their children to school where they will be exposed to COVID for the sake of a paycheck while also continuing to spread the virus. Parents should be given a choice. Every day, there are more and more positive cases and deaths in this state, not to mention the often long-lasting illness and severity of the symptoms in those who manage to survive. The people who will suffer most from returning to in-person school will be the students. How can we in good faith subject the youth of this district to higher risk of infection and increase their risk of losing their friends, classmates, teachers, and family members all because we sent them back to school too soon?" And that ends that comment as well. So at this time, we'll move on to our reports and presentations. Dr. Cobb is going to give us an update on enrollment.
All right, Dean, if you can pull up the enrollment number sheet. So I put this together once so that you can see, if you remember, in June, we put out a survey identifying or asking parents to identify where they might feel most comfortable in having their kids return to school. And it was about sixty, about fifty-five percent in-person, twenty percent remote, and about twenty-five percent undecided at that point in time, if you remember, on a sample size of about 600 parents. So we're a little bit below that, but we still have about twenty percent of our students who have chosen some alternative form of learning, whether it be remote or virtual at this point. So I just wanted to bring out where we're at in terms of our numbers, and that what this would indicate would be that we would utilize an A-B type of a schedule. So if you remember, the flow chart that we created last time was going to be dependent upon enrollment. If enrollment numbers were split such that kids could attend a full day, we would do so. Our enrollment at this point would indicate that that's probably not the best solution for us in terms of the plan that we put forward. So as you can see currently, with three sections in most of our classes, we're still well over ten students in most of our courses. So subsequently, we'll look at some type of A-B schedule, make sure that we're ready and prepared for our students to have a great learning experience while maintaining safety and the environment. At this point, we are still a number of students down. So typically, we would see about 380 students at each of our elementary schools. You can see that right now, we're just over 300 students. So we know that our enrollment's going to be down a little bit, and that's something that we can expect. But we still have some enrollment, and our secretaries and our administrators are working hard to get in contact with those parents who have yet to make a decision about enrollment so that we can update our numbers, make sure that we have the right number of in-person instructors as well as remote instructors, and that we can make sure that we have viable options on both sides that is vastly different than what parents saw with continual learning at the end of the year. So we've worked really hard on trying to make sure that our teachers are going to be prepared in developing the professional development for them, making sure that we have the right things in place for them to have all of the tools necessary to be successful in this environment. The first few weeks with our kids will very much be instructing them on how to utilize the device should we have to go to a full remote. We're hopeful that we do not. We're hopeful that we actually get to work in a backwards capacity, that is, we start in a hybrid model, and we have things that we can put in place to maintain safe environments for our kids, that we don't see huge volumes of positive cases, and that we can begin to cycle back into a full-day schedule with those different structures and strategies in place to maintain that safe environment. But these are our numbers at this point. You can see that the high school is pretty close to being where they need to be. They're currently at about 650. I think we would assume that there would be about 680, 690 students that were enrolled, so we still have a few. We know that some of them are going to choose a virtual option under K-12 and not a USD 290. That's just something that was going to happen and is happening across the state. Middle school still has quite a few kids. They're sitting right now at about 500. There's probably another 50, 60, 70 kids that we still need to get enrolled against. Some of them will have chosen a virtual option. We'll find out more about that in the next week or so as we reach out to them. Our elementaries are in a better spot. Like I said, there are still some pieces that we need to address with our elementaries, but overall, our enrollment is looking good. This is no different in this environment than it would be in any other environment year, that at the end of the deadline, we would still have kids showing up the day of or the few days before to enroll and make sure that they attend school. So it's not vastly different than what we've seen in the past. There are lots of things that we wanted to address. In terms of enrollment, as it's begun to change and how this begins to work, certainly the numbers are a big piece, which will indicate that we'll move to an A-B schedule. That schedule will be half-days. Our principals will be getting that schedule out, but there are other pieces to it that will begin to impact that day, including food service. So the way that food service will work is that if you are an A student, and you are going to be at the school in the morning, that we will come in and we will serve you breakfast in that environment. You'll be there. As the school day ends around 11 o'clock sometime, we will provide a hot or a cold lunch, depending on your choice, but there will be one choice, for you to take with you as you leave the building. The students coming into the building as the B days will then eat lunch in the school environment. So we can stagger the eating times to make sure that we have a good flow. They will be individually packaged meals, so there will not be an opportunity for kids to go through a lunch line. It will not be a buffet style where we have to deal with sneeze guards and all of the things. OPA will be developing a lunch menu and a package for each individual student, which is why we minimize the choice options there, so you don't have five different choices and go to this line if this is what you choose, whatever. So it will be a hot and a cold choice. As the B group comes in to eat, the A group takes their meals with them to leave the day. At the end of the day, the B group obviously hasn't had a chance for breakfast, but it's still our responsibility to provide them a breakfast option. So they will, at the end of the day, they will get a breakfast option for the following day, which is similar to what we're doing now on the days that we can't deliver meals every day over the summer. So is it a perfect system? Absolutely not. A perfect system would be that we continue to feed all of our kids each and every day in the same manner that we have been, where they have choice and they can go back and get as many fruits and vegetables as they want and those types of things. However, this environment asks us to do something different, and subsequently, that's the plan as we move forward with food service. Transportation has also been another piece of this. Certainly, having a half-day schedule in the mix is going to mean that we're going to increase the transportation for our kids. It is not, it can't be solely the responsibility of the parents at 11 o'clock, 11:30, whenever the day is going to end or begin, for our parents to just leave and take their kids wherever they need to go, to daycare or to home or to work with them. And we recognize that, which means that our transportation needs to be there, much like it would at any point in time during the end of the day when school is out. So not only will we have transportation bringing kids to the day, but at that split in the day, we'll have transportation dropping off new kids and picking up kids that are leaving and taking them home or to the places that they need to be, and then they will run again at about 3 o'clock when it's time to take our students home. So we'll be providing more transportation. We'll also be doing more in-town routes. So currently, our in-town routes are here at the district office, there's one at the Gopert Building, there's one on the north side of town. But because of the way that this is going to operate and the change in expectations for parents, we'll make sure that we have some more routes that are going to particular neighborhoods to try to help ease the transition for parents in this environment. So as we continue to work through the transportation piece, that will be, it will be a big part of what we need to do. But Frida has been working very diligently on this, has a plan in place. Once we have time stamped out with administrators tomorrow, we'll make sure that transportation knows what those times are, we'll begin to develop exactly what that transportation schedule looks like, make sure that it gets out to parents. The last thing that has really been asked about is the after-school program. I meet with the after-school, the Reach for the Stars Board on Thursday to have some different discussions about how we can continue to have an after-school program. Certainly, this year, maybe more than any other year, its importance in our district is certainly heightened. So there are a couple of things that we want to do there and make sure that we have access to students while still maintaining a safe environment, so no different than the school environment. We can't necessarily say that it's important for us to have small class sizes and the ability to distance students and so on and so forth, and then just have anybody and everybody come to the after-school program. It seems counterproductive in terms of logic. So what will most likely be is a 20-person section from each building, but they will still come to Eugene Field afterwards because of the offerings that have to take place in terms of staffing. So if you don't know, in the after-school program, there has to be snacks provided, there has to be all of these things that still meet the requirements of the after-school program. If we were to do that at each individual school, the increase in staffing would be substantial. I don't know that we're going to find staffing for an hour and a half every day at the price per hour. So we still need to bring them back to Eugene Field. We'll have transportation that takes care of that for us. Once they get to Eugene Field, there will be small groups isolated within each area to continue to do the things that they would typically do in an after-school program. So again, we're trying to make the environment as safe as possible while still supplying our parents with a highly needed program, and certainly try to benefit as many people as we can. We are also having conversations, and I'll probably overstep my bounds here with the Reach for the Stars Board and put something out there that maybe we shouldn't just yet, but we're going to do it anyways, and I'll ask for forgiveness later. But we also recognize that having a half-day schedule is going to be very difficult for some of our families. So we're looking at providing a, at least a model for a particular number of students in the morning and the afternoon to have access to the after-school program that would be during the day, so that those kids can spend the entire day within the school system. So there will be a process that we put together to ensure that we're meeting family needs in doing so. But what it would mean, if you were an A student, you would go to school as normal for your A day. When, at the end of the day, you would be transported back to Eugene Field, where we would then do your remote learning with instructors and with support at Eugene Field so that you didn't have to go home or be left on your own. So again, we have to identify how many people we can support in that environment, and how many people we can do so safely. But that is a part of the conversation in trying to meet our needs. We're not, we're certainly not going to be able to meet everybody's needs, nor is there going to be a program that is going to be a perfect fit for all of the things in our community. But as we continue to try to recognize the areas in which we, that we have barriers to people being able to get their kids to and from, that we have things in place that we can help some of those families out. So those are the four real areas in terms of the A-B model. Enrollment numbers are certainly going to persist there in terms of needing to space out our classrooms, but also with food service, transportation, after-school program, what schools will look like when we open up at the beginning of September.
Any questions?
All right. Thank you, Dr. Cobb, for that information on the enrollment update. Looks like we are ready to move on to the next section, 5.02, which is our activities and athletics update. And just a reminder that this is a report and presentation, there's no action being taken on this tonight, it's just some information.
So Dean, there's one, I think, that's like return, that one, return to activities, information, and protocols. So certainly, in these situations, as much as we've tried to be proactive with information, not everybody gets all the information, and I think there was some misunderstanding that the conversation tonight would be about whether or not the board was going to approve activities or not approve activities. That's never been the expectation or the conversation that was intended to be had here tonight, as activities have already started in some cases. So cross-country is already meeting for practice and doing those things. The vast majority of our other teams will begin practices around the 17th and get ready to go. We've had multiple conversations with league officials, and the reality of it is, is that every county is distinctly different in what their expectations are. And we can talk about that in a little bit. But what Mr. Phillips, who if you haven't met yet, is the new Activities Director, Assistant Principal at Ottawa High School, and has done a phenomenal job, has built this return to activities, information, and protocols. And Dean, if you just scroll down a little bit. So what he did was start taking the universal guidelines that are provided by CASIA, provided some of them by CDC, some of them by KSDE. These were the things that were identified by league officials that we could all agree upon, that these things were going to happen and were expected amongst all schools as we deal with a COVID environment. So we documented them here to make sure that not only did our parents understand how we were going to create a safe environment, but our students understood what was expected of them, and our coaches understood what was expected in those environments. It also begins to identify, if Dean keeps scrolling down, the different activities, and so here you, that one is banned, I think. But if you keep scrolling down there, there's band and vocal. So cheer and dance is where we'd start. So practice begins Monday, August 17th. It identifies where those practices take place, certainly prevention protocols that each team follows and addresses within them. Many of those are the same that we saw over summer camps. They've been significant in trying to help us quell any outlandish outbreaks of COVID-19. But each individual program is identified here in terms of athletics and activity that are sanctioned by CASIA. There's typically the ones that you see identified. Those not sanctioned by CASIA are then all kind of bound into one different program that identifies that those clubs meet at school. They will meet based upon their criteria, but there's the things that we'll still provide within them. So the athletic protocols that we have in place are certainly scrutinized by a large number of people. Our county would be one of them, and surrounding counties would be another. We've had multiple conversations with Dr. Ransom about what the expectations are and what we need to do. But some of our counties, and we shared this with Dr. Ransom per his request the other day, Dean, if you would switch over to the reopen. So this is Johnson County, and what they created was something called a gated reopening plan. And ultimately, they have this identifier here that would indicate where they're at within their county in terms of identified cases and positive cases, and what that means for the programming involved within the schools. So their county took a little more stringent stance than some of our other surrounding counties. Currently, frankly- Currently, Franklin County has identified that they'll follow the state mandates and guidelines. Johnson County took it a step further and put more stringent things in place. But what you can see currently is that they're red, and that's why they're having the discussions of starting remote only. And at this point, what they've identified is that they're high-risk activities, which are then defined later in the document. But initially, that is football and cheer with stunting. Sideline cheer is something different, but cheer with stunting would be identified as high-risk programming and currently not allowed. So as they work through this, then those different things come back online, and the schools have different options to have them put back in place. I know that I've been in conversations with superintendents from Wyandotte County and from Leavenworth County, that a gated process like this is in conversation. Whether or not it occurs or not is yet to be seen. That will certainly be up to those counties. But I also know that KSDE is developing a gated guideline like this for the entirety of the state. So if that's what they begin to come out with for their recommendations, there may be some different conversations amongst county officials. We just never know. But this is out there, and it is something happening. It's not happening in our community as of yet, which remains based upon the governor's mandates and expectations in the Ad-Astra Plan at this point. Which brings us to the next piece. So I wanted you to see that to know that there are other conversations that are existing out there. This is what that document pulls off of. So the guidance for opening up high school athletics, it's what defines a high-risk activity or a moderate activity or those types of things. But it comes from the National Federation of High School Athletics. The governor's mandate at this point is that we should not have gatherings of greater than 45 persons at an event. I met with Dr. Ransom last week and had some conversations about exactly what that means. And his belief would be that either indoors or outdoors. Forty-five persons is the limit, because at no point in time can we guarantee social distancing without some sort of social distance police. And I don't know that any one of us want to be the social distance police. Certainly not where I want my administrators spending their time. But I guess if that's the expectation, then we can find a way to make that work. Forty-five persons, and we used football as an example, forty-five persons would be on either sideline, not including the athletes. So athletes, coaches, the personnel that would be there are not included in that 45. The 45 would be spectators only. So when you start thinking about 45 persons on a football team with 45 student athletes, it doesn't take long to fill that up, especially if within that you identify that the ancillary events that go along with a football team are equally as important as the events themselves. Our band kids spend an awful lot of time in preparing for a halftime show, and it is really no different for them to present what they've worked on all week, even if there are no fans in the stand, than it is for football players to play the game. Cheer does the same thing. It is their program to practice and prepare all week. The event that they provide is cheer at the event. I think we have to be very careful to indicate that one is more important than the other. Regardless, once you start identifying that there would be three different groups, maybe at a football game, it doesn't take long to surpass your limit of 45 people and becomes very difficult to govern in terms of who gets a pass and who doesn't get a pass. So that is something that we will have to overcome as we continue to talk about, to the Health Department about how that's going to work. I think that right now, Dr. Ransom's recommendation would be that we just don't have spectators. Would certainly make our job much easier. Whether or not that's the right decision or not is yet to be determined, but that is something that we have to consider moving forward. From a soccer and volleyball and other fall sport programs, it becomes more difficult. One, in an inside event, it's 45 persons tops that are spectators. So now you're talking about split between two different teams. So if you think about this in terms of a dual night, in which you're going to have freshman JV and varsity teams play against another team, we'll use Baldwin as an example. If you have 30 students on each team, you've got 60 student athletes on the court with 45 spaces to fill, which means that somebody's not going to be allowed to attend. None of those things go very well. So again, the conversation that we have to have is how do we provide the best, most suitable environment for people to be able to watch and for our athletes to be able to be observed on the field of competition or on the court? And we've had that conversation with Dean about streaming events and making sure they're available to the public and so on and so forth. Soccer, even though it is an outside event, they share a set of bleachers on one side of the stadium. So again, it was indicated to us that there would be no more than 45. But again, that would be for a JV and varsity match with two different teams, which would, again, make it very difficult in determining who had passes and who didn't. This is where we've come back to the league for conversations about how we're going to do this league-wide. What is the expectation? Are there going to be groups, specifically with Miami County, who has indicated that they're not going to follow the governor's order, that may just let everybody in? And if that's the case, certainly, it impacts everybody else who has more stringent guidelines, certainly Johnson County, who may be battling some of those things. But as a league, as the Frontier League continues to converse about this, we want to make sure that we can be as consistent as possible, so that as parents come to our events, we're not the ones heading off the frustration about the event, that those things can be precursory in terms of making sure that everybody's aware of what's going to happen as they attend an event with us. So that's kind of what we know about activities and athletics at this point. There's been no conversation at this point about not having athletics. One, those things are going to be out of our control. Well, I guess if we wanted to say we weren't going to have athletics, we could. I don't know that there's anybody that's willing to take that leap at this point. But I think that there are some other entities that that conversation may be there. One is CACIA, and currently, CACIA has shied away from that. The other would be the league, that if they wanted to say, "We're not going to have league events," that would not preclude Ottawa or any other league school from continuing to host events. It would just mean that we wouldn't do so as a league. So certainly, that would be something. And of course, the county can certainly come in and say, "No, we're not going to do this anymore." So those are all things that I think we have to take into consideration as we make these moves. We're going to, this week is going to impact us a great deal. If you've watched any of what is going on, the Power Five conferences have gotten together and had some discussions about whether or not they're going to have college football. I think what we all know, if you pay attention to how the college system works, is that if football is not played, there's really not enough money for any of the other athletics or activities to continue to work, because that's the revenue stream for all of the others. If football is not played, I would imagine that you will see Division One athletics say that we're not going to host any fall events. Once that happens, you'll probably see that trickle down to Division Two, Division Three, NAI. And then I think you probably see CACIA and other state high school athletic associations have to make some decisions about whether or not they can host those activities in a safe environment, knowing that the people who have the most money and the people who have the most opportunity to isolate their kids, keep them safe, do all of those things, have determined that they can't in that environment. Again, those things are out of our control. But I think if we don't believe that those conversations are going to happen and that they would impact us down the road, then we're probably blinding ourselves to the real conversation. But we will see how all of that goes. At this point, we'll continue with athletics as we have planned. We'll continue to do the best we can to provide that safe environment for our kids. And hopefully, we have the opportunity to compete and do great things for the entirety of the year and not have to have any shutdowns, as many people think that we will. Any questions?
Yes.
Well, I appreciate that we're, I'm sorry, I'm supposed to announce my name. Harold Winger. I appreciate that the district is moving forward with sports and activities as planned, and all activities, just not sports, but band, as you said, and things like that. Two is, I know we aren't making any decisions tonight, but as we make that plan, and those decisions that are left to the district, I would support having spectators as much as we can. I understand that it creates conflict and, you know, other obstacles. I understand it may not be in our decision. I mean, there may be authorities that regulate that for us. But I do think, just as much as it is great for the kids to be on the field, whether in football or soccer or band or cheer, it's also equally important for their families and friends and relatives to see that as well. And I understand the challenges. Do you let the football parents in? You know, who do you let in, and how does that work? But I travel a lot, and this last weekend was, had some, well, just say, larger gatherings. Don't tell any Franklin County people that, okay? And, you know, it's amazing when they say, "Sit every other row, and only families can sit together, and then you have to social distance six feet apart." I was amazed how thousands of people can fill places. We sat every other row, and if we weren't family, we social distance. I think America is starting to figure that out. And I would, I don't know how our stadiums are. Outdoor would be easier.
Sure.
But, you know, just hand out and say, "Hey, we've blocked off every other row not to do it, and we're asking you that if you're not a family unit, that you sit six feet apart from each other." I understand you don't want the high school staff or the middle school staff, and I don't want them out there being, social distancing with a tape measure and saying you aren't six feet apart. But I would like us to, to the ability that we can, to, as time, and I know we got a little bit of time to figure this out, but I just want to make sure that we give spectators every opportunity to be there, if we can make that work.
Yeah, I don't disagree. I don't disagree.
I just, this is Julie D'Andrio. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. Dr. Cobb, we just kind of mentioned the large group sports tonight, because those are the ones that sometimes cause the most issues with the distancing and amount of people. But certainly, we have rules in place for all fall sports and activities. And I think we left dance out when we were talking about those all-important people that are involved in that football game experience, and we certainly don't want to do that.
Sure.
But I just want to clarify. You showed us the images from Johnson County and what they're doing, but you are not suggesting to any of us that this is, you're not asking us to consider that. This is just what they're doing for our information, so we know what options have been out there.
No, this is not a recommendation to the board, nor is it anything that we are pushing. The reason that I brought it up is to make, one, make sure that our board understood that every county was addressing this in a different fashion. Again, you have Miami County, who has basically been laissez-faire about the entirety of the thing. You have Johnson County, who has created a gated document. You have Wyandotte County, who has partnered with all of the districts within Wyandotte County to be very consistent in their model and approach, and each one of them is, in essence, doing the same thing. So every county has chosen to address it in a different manner, which is why I wanted to indicate that thinking about it as a league became even more difficult, because the consistency that we thought we could address within the league was being mitigated by the construct of the county. So at the bare minimum, if we wanted consistency across the league, it would have been the Johnson County model, because Spring Hills and Johnson County. We all recognize that that's not best for all of us, right? But I also wanted you to know that this has caught attention of people. Dr. Ransom has looked at it. He's shared it with the county commissioners. I don't know that they've had any conversations about it beyond that. But it is a conversation that's being addressed, and certainly is going to be a conversation about how we best keep our students safe and make sure that athletics are not the catalyst for our academics to be shut out, that whatever we put in place, that we have what we feel are sound structures and supports in place to keep our kids safe in that environment, so that that environment doesn't impinge upon the academic environment, which is the ultimate goal. I think the same goal for colleges and universities as well.
Thank you for that clarification.
Susan?
Susan Moore, hard to say. Anyway, I would like for us to give some consideration to, we're putting a lot of effort into safety. We're putting a lot of effort into protocols and all the systems that we have, time and energy that everyone has to put in place. And I would like for the board to consider that if kids come to sports, because we always hear this thing of, "If I don't go to practice, regardless of how deathly ill I am, I'm never going to get played." And maybe we should give some consideration to saying, "If you come sick by just taking ibuprofen to hide your symptoms, and you endanger the team and the coaches and everything else, then you're off the team for the year."
Yeah, so...
Because I just think that that's reckless behavior.
Yep. We tried to address that through our summer camps and conditioning programs, and one, with coaches to identify that any student who was not able to attend summer programming, conditioning, weights, whatever it happened to be, even camps, that choosing not to attend those things could have no bearing on their placement within the team. So we know that every year, that there are these things that, "Hey, we've got two kids of equal value here. One has been coming every day and working their tail off, so that's going to be the kid that starts," or whatever it happens to be. That's been a tried and true model for athletics for years and years. But what we wanted to make sure was that in this environment, not all of our kids are the ones who have the ability to state what they're going to do or what they're not going to do. Some of our parents have made decisions for them, and that shouldn't impact their ability to participate or not participate. So the same will be said for those who are sick. And if you look through those protocols that Mr. Phillips put together, every one of them at the end says that, "If you are sick, stay home." We do not, not from an academic standpoint, not from an athletic standpoint, if you are sick, we need you to stay home. It is not, "I've got a game tonight, so I've got to go, even though I feel under the weather." No. We just can't do that this year. So we've got to make sure, and that's a part of, again, the conversations that we've had with Dr. Ransom, about trying to identify some identifiers that would help us understand, are these seasonal allergies that we're exhibiting here, or are these true COVID symptoms? And trying not to lump them all together. You know, we all know that there's the kid that's going to have allergies, and they're going to have a runny nose, and they're going to have whatever. I don't ever get allergies, so whatever symptoms go along with it. But we also know that many of those show up on the identifiers for COVID-19. So to be able to work with our Health Department to determine, yeah, every year, we know that this kid goes through these symptoms based upon seasonal allergies, this is not a COVID issue. But we can work through some of those things and make sure that our students still have the ability to do the things that they need to do and participate, without getting overwhelming in terms of safety protocols, but still maintaining the environment that will be safe for all of our kids.
Were our friends that met us outside aware that all of this information was public information on board docs?
Most of it went on board docs this morning, because we're still waiting on Mr. Phillips to get some thanks to me, and I was waiting on, trying to determine what the county was going to do. And ultimately, when I talked to Dr. Ransom this morning, he had indicated that, yes, it had been shared, but that they hadn't had any conversations preceding that. So I didn't want to put it on board docs and have the discussion about those things if our county was basically saying, "We're not even going to have this conversation. It's not worth it." So until I got word that that was going to be there, since there's no action on it, I went ahead and uploaded it on Monday this morning to make sure that we had access to it today.
Well, it could have alleviated some of their anxieties about fall sports beginning.
And that last comment was from Linda Alderman.
Oh, sorry.
No, I think that's true. But I also think that in this environment, one of the things that we have to be cognizant of is that the speed of change is so quick that there is never going to be a way that we are always in front of it, that some people will just not have the information as it comes, as hard as we try. But there are just some things that change for us. A great example would be last week, when we talk about learning logs, which we'll talk about here in just a second, that initially, we thought we could do one thing. We got word that we couldn't, had a different conversation. All of a sudden, we can again. In a period of 24 hours, we were given three different sets of guidelines. There's just not going to be a way for us to always... sets of guidelines. There's just not going to be a way for us to always be in front of that information as we move forward.
Thank you. Oh, Melidia?
Melidia Payne. I had a question about the, the spectators for the, I'm, I support what Harold said about doing everything we can to allow as many spectators as possible, all the spectators. And so, I was curious about the 45 number, because who is that? How are other counties doing that if?
So, the other counties have made a decision to either follow or not follow the governor's mandate. So, the governor's mandate at this point is that there shouldn't be gatherings larger than 45, because we're in stage three, phase three of the Ad Astra plan. Counties that chose to opt out of that could identify their own plan. Franklin County did not choose to opt out of it. They supported the governor's plan, and subsequently, that's where we're at. So, when I talk to the health department, their indication is that we need to, to continue to follow those guidelines.
Because I think, aren't churches, like with the every other pews and the social distancing, allowing people to come?
I think churches fought their own battle. And there are some different rights that churches are provided, that, that were ultimately, if you followed the, the different lawsuits that came back after the initial piece that, that came out, that, that I think Governor Kelly indicated that churches need to, needed to close as well. There were some lawsuits there that provided churches some different rights than, than everybody else.
Right.
So, yeah, they may be able to do that, but I, I don't know that that is a similar allowance for all entities.
So, just to be clear, is it Dr. Ransom that is enforcing the 45, or is it the county commissioners?
The county health officer has been given, my understanding, has been given the authority by the county commission to make statements about what is appropriate under the mandate. And because the county commission approved the governor's order, we're all held to it.
Okay.
Would be my understanding. I'm not, I'm not a lawyer by any stretch of the imagination. But that's, that's, that's what I know, and those are the, that's the guidance that I've been given to work under.
Any other questions for Dr. Cobb's about this issue? All right, thank you.
Hey, very good.
All right, we are going to move down to section 5.03, which is-
All right. Dean's going to get started on some software showcase here for you, because he's put together some amazing things. One of the things that I, that we wanted to talk about was the, was the learning logs that we had discussed. So, a big piece of the learning log initially, from a remote environment, was that, that families were expected to fill out this log every day, identifying six hours of work every day. And so, what we found out from KSDE last week was that if we have expectations from the teacher for that learning time, we can pre-populate the learning log. And so, Dean has created a system that would allow for teachers to identify what they're doing within Google Docs, which is how we're going to share information with kids. And then it will pre-populate into the log, along with the number of minutes that we identify should be required to accomplish it.
Dr. Cobb's?
Yes, sir.
Um, do you have something that you're showing everybody else, because I don't have an attachment for that?
Dean is getting ready to throw it up here right now. Probably, maybe we're going to turn your screen.
We can't see anything.
We're going to have some weird challenges with getting this up here simultaneously, you being able to see it, and then people at home being able to see it. So, it's not going to be really easy to get all of those going at the same time, and me running back and forth to a microphone and what have you. So, I'll give you a brief overview of what it does, and then I'll show kind of a demo up here. I'll be able to show everyone here the student side, but the student side, which is the family side, might not be able to be broadcast home due to the way we stream this. It's going to be really weird. But we'll put together some information. We'll get it out to everybody, so they can see how it works before we put this into practice.
Yeah, I was just asking if somebody can turn, so I'm not looking at Susan, and maybe see the screen that you're looking at.
Can you see?
Thank you.
Hey, there we go.
As Dr. Cobb's mentioned, we had some guidelines to operate under that have been changing pretty rapidly. Our options at that point were to have, like, like a spreadsheet that families would fill out, which would be cumbersome, to say the least. Our options were to have paper that we would then have families fill out, return to teachers. Teachers would then bring those to the office. We'd have some kind of filing system. Someone would digitize them or not. We decided to go digital entirely from the get-go, to make it easier for families, and to allow us to pull in information that's all the same. Since we pull it from Google Classroom, it's guaranteed clean data when it comes into our system. So, I'm going to show you the, kind of a rundown. The, the goal for this software is to make it intuitive for families and teachers. The software actually pulls directly from Google Classroom. So, the teachers don't come here. The teachers don't look at this page. They don't enter information on this page. This page pulls information from their regularly, everything they operate under regularly on a regular day. So, I'm going to go quickly login real quick to my account. I'm going to open my Google Classroom, and I'm going to add an assignment. I'm going to show you from my daughter's account what that looks like. So, my daughter, I'm allowing us to look at her data here, so.
We're good.
Do we have a waiver signed on that, by the way?
I will hit one, I will get one signed.
And while Mr. Grall gets that, we will note that Mrs. Olmsted has joined us. So, now we have seven board members present.
Okay. So, the first, first thing you'll see is that when I log in, it's using my Google account. We use the student's Google account, too. There's no creating an account. There's no registration. There's no parent sign up. There's no hiccups, is the plan here. So, if a student has a Chromebook, at any time when they're logged into it, the parent can open their Chromebook. They click on our website that we have here, and they're immediately logged in, using that same credential, and they can continue to start to use this software. You'll see a lot of options here, and I've got a driver over there, which is awesome. All of these options are administrative options, pretty much. The only thing our students will see here, and I'll show you the student view in a minute, is that gray button that says online work log. That is all they will see. So, as Dr. Cobb's clicks that, the family then is presented with a few dropdowns. It's a Google Classroom, pulls directly from it. I am only enrolled in one Google Classroom. It's Skyward Secondary Teachers. And as you select that, the assignments load. The assignment dropdown then has one assignment, Professional Development Center, and then you add a time spent. So, this is kind of the very, very basic level, if a teacher doesn't enter any other time requirements. Chris, can you see that all right? Kinda? Sorta? Okay. Now, I'm going to-
Yes, I can see it.
Perfect. I'm going to run back there and login as my daughter, and show you kind of the other side, what the student will see, when we have the power of the software really revealed, and what it can do. So, just one second, please.
One of the things that I don't know if you did see, when you clicked on that Professional Development, it started at 15 minutes. And so, the way we put it in would identify to parents about how long they should be spending on that activity at home, so that, one, we're not spending a lot more time on something that, that maybe we shouldn't, or that we're not spending enough time on it, on an activity that we should be spending more.
And then, as you see, I'm logged in as my daughter now. She does have two options. Temperature logs there at the top. That was kind of when we started this. We added it just because we don't know if we're going to use it. We are not going to use it, so ignore that for now. So, as Dr. Cobb's clicks on online work log, she is a member of a classroom called Test Tech. She will click that, and then, under assignment, she has one currently, and it says 10 minutes. So, right now, we have designated that the minimum time spent is 10 minutes on that assignment. She can't spend nine minutes. She can't spend eight minutes, 10 or more. So, the teachers will put that information in. Now, the challenge arises in the fact that Google Classroom does not have a time field. You can't have a time field built in. It doesn't exist, because Google Classroom is not used in that manner. So, as I go back to my classroom, and I'll do this from back here, hopefully they'll pick up on the microphones. Because I am a teacher of this class, I can create an assignment, and I can call it board meeting. And then, the software is going to pull information out of this box. It's a free-form entry. You can enter whatever you want to. But the software knows what times look like, and it pulls them out. If they're minutes, or in hours. Right now, if it's a combination of minutes and hours, doesn't work. We'll fix it. But it can be in the middle of a sentence. Please plan to spend at least 15 minutes on this assignment. I assign it. I come back to Kaya, because she's in my classroom. Refresh the page for the latest data. Select our classroom, Test Tech. Assignments load, and there's my 15-minute board meeting assignment. So, now, it accepts input, again, in the middle of that description. So, there's no standardized form that we're requiring teachers to have, or a dash, or a space, and then the time, or in the title have the time, anywhere in there. Hey, spend 10 minutes on this. Spend an hour on this. Do one hour of guided reading, whatever. It will parse it, put it in our software, pre-filling kind of the log for them. What you don't see here is the actual submission of each line item. That's not built yet. But the beauty of this, again, is we're building our own software, so we can do this. We make our own requirements. Our software kind of moves with our requirements. We're not trying to make a round peg fit a square hole with some other software that's out there. The final piece of this software that we were building was a symptom checker for staff, but we have more information on that, but if you want to speak to that.
So, the symptom checker for staff is ultimately, we're going to have to have, our staff identify, as well as students identify, what symptoms they may or may not exhibit during the day. Right? So, as you all know, the mandate at this point in time is that everybody has to have a temperature check prior to entering the building. So, they can't come in the building if their temperature exceeds 100.4. So, the issue with that is that we have staff that get to work at 5:00 in the morning at times. There's going to be nobody there to check their temperature as they come in. We are going to have to have our staff be responsible for taking care of themselves, as much as you talk of it. You're going to have to be responsible for the health of everybody else. Right? So, within this, we have an opportunity for them to identify the things, so they can go through and say, we have been checked. Right? So, now, if they, if they're going through, they're identifying that they've met the requirements to enter our building. They're the ones taking responsibility for that, and ultimately, hold the liability, should they have not been honest about how they come into our building. But this gives us an, an opportunity to get away from saying the building doesn't open until a particular time. We all know that teachers come at different times, that some of them spend more time in buildings than others. We don't want to take that opportunity away from them. Certainly, they have a great deal of work to do. We have the ability, from a technology standpoint, to trust our staff to do the right things. We will, we will empower them to make good decisions, to do the right thing. And just like with our kids, if you're not feeling well, don't come to work. We will find somebody that can cover your class. But this would give them the opportunity to then be able to display that to us, that they've addressed their needs, and we can move forward. So, a couple of different softwares that, that Dean has been working on to try to make our jobs much easier. If you think about what it looks like in terms of learning logs, and the number of students that were identified as remote learners, and somewhere on average of about, what, probably 25 kids per grade level, so you're looking at, at pretty close to 300 kids. If you can think of what the stack of papers look like, if a document comes in every day from 300 kids over the course of 160 days, and the auditing nightmare that would go along with that, when we start looking at our FTE, having a digital document that we can then download and, and address in, in a different Excel format certainly is a great deal for us.
Two more points of clarification that Dr. Cobb's kind of touched on. Number one, if we do get audited, it's a simple click. If they pick, what they would typically do is pick five students and say, let's see these learning logs. We click a button, deliver them via email, or whatever, and we're done. So, that's, that's a really great selling point for this. The final thing I want to cover is for the health professionals in the room. This is HIPAA information. So, we do collect it. It is stored double-blind in a database. It's a relational database. And we use a hash of a unique identifier to store it in the database. So, only if someone had the database, they'd have a bunch of numbers, and it wouldn't make any sense to anybody, anyway. So, I don't believe, I don't know if we're requiring this at this point. The symptom log?
No.
No, not at all.
No. So, again, the symptom log at this point is not something that's required. We built it just in case that's where it went. Currently, the only thing that we have to do is address temperature scans prior to anybody entering the building. So, and we don't have to document those. We just have to simply do it. So, it's not a, here comes Julie Dandrio, check 98.6, mark it down. It's just, are you under 100.4? Okay, you're allowed into the building. If not, we move you to an area in which you would be, they use the term isolated. That's not necessarily how we will describe it, but certainly, an area which you would not be around other students, if you're not feeling well. Make sure that we communicate with your parents to come back and get you from school, and not have you there infecting anybody else. So, that's kind of where we're at with this.
I do have a question. Harold Winger. I do have a question on the temperature thing. If I have a temperature during the day, 10:00, I develop a fever. And I go to the nurse. Protocol is, yes, you got a fever. You're going home. I'm not allowed back in the building the next day. Is that correct?
Yeah, our, our policies indicate that there's a 24-hour symptom, or fever-free-
Right. So, we're going to strictly enforce that. I think that's important for parents to know, that if you go home during one day, you're not coming back the next day, period.
Yes.
Okay.
You even see some guidelines within CDC requirements indicate 72 hours after a fever. I think when we have conversations, if it's solely a fever with no other symptoms, then again, our kids get fevers sometimes. If it's a fever with other symptoms, then yeah, we're probably telling them to, to stop and, and not come back to school. We'll do a remote environment for them during that time.
Okay.
Any other questions for Dr. Cobb's or Mr. Grall on this?
Dr. Cobb's?
Yes, sir.
Chris Cunningham here. I have one question. I didn't know if maybe you or Dean have seen, University of Kansas has like this kiosk thing, and I think maybe somebody there in their tech program maybe created it, that does the, and they even have an app for it. I see you shaking your head, Dean.
Yep.
That there's some type of kiosk thing. I thought that was pretty neat, and wondered if that would be any benefit to us. And then, the other thing, on this learning log, this is just for the AB model, or is this going to be for all the?
So, the, so I'll, I think I can probably answer both questions. So, let's start with the learning log. The learning log does not have to be provided for AB students. We'll probably ask them to do it, just in case we get to a remote environment, and they need to be prepared to know how to do it. But the, the learning, our remote, or our AB kids, according to the state, as long as they see a teacher physically every day, which is another reason why we went with a half-day model, as long as they see each teacher every day, then they're not required to do the learning log. For people who are solely remote, that do not see a teacher physically every day, they have to develop and, and turn in the document that would indicate that they've done six hours of learning on that day. As far as the, the kiosk and the thermal imaging cameras, we, we actually looked at those and had some conversations. One is, we felt like that had we utilized those, we would have created a bottleneck for kids and forced everybody at an entry. So, instead, what we did was, we purchased multiple touch-free scanners that we can create, different entry points. We'll put them on our buses, so any kids that are traveling on the bus, and then, they, we can take their temperature before they ever get on the bus, and that, that is acceptable for pre-entry to the building. So, as they get on the bus, drivers checking temperatures, so all of them can go into the building without, without the need to be scanned again. Everybody else will have multiple teachers at different entry points, scanning people to try to make it as quickly through the system as possible. That's why we chose not to go with the thermal scanners.
One really neat thing about KU's app, and I'd love to have the time to build this here, is if there is a building that requires access control, much like ours do, the app can be integrated in such a way that unless you fill that and get the correct answers, which is, no, I don't have any symptoms and a low temperature, you cannot use your access control card until you fill that every single day. We can't get that tightly, we can get that tightly integrated, but it would take a lot of time. It'd be really cool, but.
[laughing]
And this, this is entirely mobile-friendly. So, if you actually bookmark this on your phone, it will look like an app. It's not an app, but it will act like a mobile phone app. It'll look like a mobile phone app. It's user-friendly. It organizes the buttons to fit your screen vertically. We're trying to make it, again, as intuitive as possible. We did have the benefit that this was the Cyclone Hour software we used last year. We just kind of threw more stuff on it. So, it's the same platform. We're just building on top of it.
Any other questions for these gentlemen? Yes, Susan?
One thing, Susan Moore. Is there a resource person or people that staff can ask? The same questions like what you were talking about. Is this allergies? Is it COVID? Is it, you know, so that there's a central repository, or a central person who acts as that repository for, you really need to go home, but Julie can stay?
Yep.
Or something like that.
We're really trying to have our, our nurses do it. But they're asking for some guidance from the, the county health department, and from-
It's really difficult, because the symptoms are so typical.
So, I, I just don't know that there's a good answer for that, or a great solution. What I do know is that I don't want it to be our secretaries, who it has been in the past, right? Oh, you're not feeling well. Let's just call your mom, and, and we'll go home. I want to make sure that, that we have the ability to, to have real conversations with our parents about the health of our kids this year, more than any year, to, to make sure that, that our environment- make sure that, that our environment is able to stay open as long as, as we possibly can and not be overcome by, by other things.
We ended up having to stand up a COVID hotline.
Yeah.
Kids, parents, teachers, staff, everybody. Just because it's hard to keep track of.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Grell, for all your work on getting this software moving forward to make things easier for our parents and students and staff. Appreciate that. We are down to the actionable part of our agenda tonight, and the first one is neighborhood revitalization.
Dean, if you just click on packet one.
Hey, Dr. Cobb's?
Yes, sir.
Can you turn me back to the rest of the meeting, please?
That better?
I know it.
A little more.
A little more.
Yeah.
That's good. Thanks.
You could see me because I could see you too. So, I didn't know if that worked that way.
Yeah. So, it's, it's been a little while since we've had anything with neighborhood revitalization, but, but one of the great things is we're beginning to see a lot of, a lot of work, especially on the north side of town, which I think is, is commendable. If you have driven by the old Lincoln Lot recently, I don't believe that any of those houses show up here, but there are houses going up on the old Lincoln Lot, which is a definitive benefit to the north side of town. But the Revitalization Act has, has done a great deal for our community, and there are, what, about 15, 12, 15 homes on, on this particular revitalization proposal. Again, it does take them off of the tax base for a little while, but the benefit to us at coming back and having those houses be at a higher assessed valuation certainly comes back to us in the end. So, it would be my recommendation that we go ahead and approve. And I don't know, Harold, are you still on the Neighborhood Revitalization Committee?
And, and I echo with what you're saying. I mean, this is a great program. The city has worked, a couple of years ago, they actually started to put the wheels in motion. They expanded it, expanded the territory, and then, yes, with the market as hot as it is right now. In fact, we just got a new packet that's going in, so you'll see another around in a month. So, I think things are really moving.
Yeah. Certainly a benefit.
Absolutely.
Are there any questions for Dr. Cobb's or for Mr. Winger about this before we take action?
I do have a question for Harold. Harold, how long have we been doing this? Is this 10 years that we've been doing it? Have we actually seen some come off the tax rolls and we start getting the full tax amount? Or are we still not to that 10-year line where some of these are coming off?
Well, I've only been doing it five years. So, I don't, I, but yes, I believe the city's actually been doing it for quite a while, and we're starting to see some of those come off. So, yes, I think this has been a program that's actually been around 15, 20 years or more. So, yes. But I think what happened, it was early on, it was so narrowly defined and limited. It was hard to find properties, either literally land or homes that qualified. So, we expanded that to pretty much the city of Ottawa, and then we also included new homes to encourage new home development. A lot of what you see is new home, $125,000 to $30,000 in structure being built. So, it's a really good program.
It'd be interesting to see, Harold, what the houses that are coming off, what they are tax valued at now, that the taxes that are coming in versus what the initial give-back was to them the first year at 95%.
Okay. I can try and get that for us.
I'm just, it's just curiosity to see how much dividend that pays off over 10 years.
Sure.
Would anyone like to propose action on this?
Madam President, I move that we pass the Neighborhood Revitalization Proposal tonight.
Second.
Okay. So, it was moved by Harold Winger, and it was seconded first by Susan Moore, that we approve tonight's Neighborhood Revitalization Plan. We'll do a roll call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio, yes. Susan Moore?
Yes.
Shanda Olmsted?
Yes.
Melodya Payne?
Yes.
Harold Winger?
Yes.
And that passes 7-0. And we are down to 6.02, which is the 2021 school calendar.
All right. So, last time we voted to approve the start date and end date, what we've done in between is fill all the gaps. So, we have four distinct quarters, each of them at 40 days. One of them ends November 4th, or 5th, with a workday on the 6th. The 2nd ends January 21st with a workday on the 22nd. The third one ends March 31st with a workday on April 1st, and then the last day of school is the 28th with a workday on June 1. So, all of this occurs, of course, with the pushing back of the start of the, the school year until September 1. All in all, we presented this calendar with some minor changes. There are only two changes after we presented it to, to our group at OEA, who, who I think were, were very pleased with the calendar. One was that we moved back the end of the first quarter from the 29th to the 5th, and we moved back the end of the third quarter from, I think, the 26th to the 1st. And all of that was to make sure that we had equal number of days in each of the quarters, make sure that, that we are able to, to separate what we do in our semester courses as much as we can. Again, there are parts of this calendar that, that would not be how we would want to present them in a normal school year, but given the circumstances, there, there are things that we, we have to overcome with this. But for the most part, there, there are great things about this calendar. One piece that we will see that's substantially different is parent-teacher conferences will take place prior to the end of the quarter, which might actually be a positive and something that remains in calendars moving forward. But if there's any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Did we also?
Linda, please say your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Linda Alderman. Did we also move a workday in, to the September 2nd? We, didn't, didn't we do that during negotiations as well?
Yes. So, yes. So, we moved the workday from wherever it was to the Wednesday, the September 2nd. There will be three things that if we approve this tonight, we'll have to create an MOU for. One is the number of PD days at the beginning of the year. Two is that the 9th is not a half-day. So, typically, the negotiated agreement says the first day with students would be a half-day. The third is that, that there is a flex day at the end of the first semester. Typically, on, on our old calendar, it would have been December 21st. That would have been a workday, but because the flex day is in the vacation period, if you're, if you're done with your workday, if you have all your grades in, those things, you don't have to show up to work, which is why it's identified as a flex day. We took the flex day out, put a workday in because it no longer is embedded in the, in the vacation period. So, those three things, if the board approves tonight, we'll go back to OEA and, and work through an MOU on. I wanted to make sure before we presented this to the board that OEA was approving of all of those things, which is why we, we worked with them on the calendar and to get other insights as well. But to this point, they all seemed very approving of the calendar, would be willing to, to develop the MOUs as needed.
Any other questions or discussion before we take action?
I think it's a good calendar. A lot of work. Appreciate you and your staff and OEA working together to come up with a calendar because I know it was no easy task. So, job well done.
Thank you.
Would someone like to make a motion on this calendar?
Madam President, I move that we approve the calendar as presented.
Second.
It was moved by Linda Alderman and seconded by Harold Winger that we approve tonight's calendar. We will do a roll call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio, yes. Susan Moore?
Yes.
Shanda Olmsted?
Yes.
Melodya Payne?
Abstain.
Harold Winger?
Yes.
So, that passes 6 to 1. All right. We will move on to devices. So, up next, Mr. Grell's going to join us again with Dr. Cobb's and present on the need for devices in USD 290.
So, the last time we met, there was a, a conversation about continuing the, the purchase of devices. I think there are two things here. One would be the, the recommendation from our Director of Technology as to whether or not we need devices. But the other thing that the board asked for was for counts and costs that would be associated with them. And if Dean would scroll down there a little bit, it's at the bottom of this one. Keep going. That there would be, that if we wanted to, so I think this indicated that we would purchase about 200 per class. So, if we want to do a class, the cost with a case would be about $65,000. Two classes, about $124,000, $25,000. Three classes gets into $190,000, which gives us some indication of where we might want to go. So, the question at this point, I think we, we belabored to, to the end. The question really amongst the board is whether or not you want to purchase new devices or you do not.
Is there any discussion? I guess I have a question for my fellow board members. Is, is anyone, after getting this information, do you think that we need to purchase devices? And if so, I would just kind of like to hear your thoughts and reasoning behind that. Anyone?
Well, I thought Mr. Grell made it perfectly clear in his letter that to purchase these devices is not necessary at this point in time. And I also think Susan made a good point last time that should we purchase additional devices, it could, her sustainability argument, it could be something that we could not afford then down the road to replace that number of devices.
Certainly, the information that we got this week was really helpful in sorting this issue out. Would anyone like to make an action or take action or propose a motion to purchase any devices at this time?
No, I think we'll just let it play out.
Okay.
I'm interested to see how those devices work in a couple, three weeks.
Very good. Well, we don't have any action, so we will move on. Thank you, Mr. Grell, for all that work you put in for us. We appreciate it. And we are up to Section 6.04, which is our preschool change and the preschool fee change. Mr. Robinson?
So, for those of you that are newer to the board, we have three ways that we pay for our preschool. The majority of it comes through our four-year-old at-risk grant. We get some funding through special ed and I guess through our general fund. And then the other way is some of our families are full tuition pay. So, they pay a monthly fee just like they would attending a childcare center. So, with looking at an AB schedule, we are adjusting our preschool schedule from almost a four-hour day down to just short of a two-hour classroom day. And for, for many of our families, we know that that's going to mean that the childcare procedures they already have in place, they're going to need to, to pay more. And at that age, you're talking a pretty significant cost. This is a really small piece of how we fund our preschool. So, we believe by keeping families in our program, because that's part of my concern, is that if we keep our costs where they are, we're going to see some of our families choose to do something different, that we gain both extra time to provide instruction, but many of them are also going to qualify this year as we look at an expanded at-risk definition from the state. And so, we also risk losing at-risk money. And so, it's important to me that we're able to keep them in school and still attending in our preschool program. We have had nine or 10 choose to go remote, and so we've tried to address that as well. So, the proposal right now cuts our fees almost in half from $112 for full pay to 60, and from $56 a month to 30 for our free, and really, it's our reduced, our free. Students will qualify under at-risk and won't pay anything. And then, we've also put in some criteria here to address some things last year that we didn't have clear definition for, like when school went completely remote last year in March and April. We still provided remote preschool opportunities for our families, but we really didn't have a good way to address fees. And so, this kind of gives families an idea of what that would look like as well. Do you have questions about our proposal?
Mr. Robinson? I just want to clarify that we are just voting on the fee schedule, right?
Absolutely. Not the schedule and everything else. That was just to give you a picture of what we were looking at.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Would someone like to make a motion on the preschool fee change?
Madam President, I move that we accept the proposal for the preschool fee change.
Second.
All right. So, it was proposed by, moved by Linda Alderman and seconded by Shanda Olmsted, that we accept this proposal for preschool fee change. We'll do a roll call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio, yes. Susan Moore?
Yes.
Shanda Olmsted?
Yes.
Melodya Payne?
Yes.
Harold Winger?
Yes.
And that passes 7-0. Thank you, Mr. Robinson, for your work on that. All right. And we are down to our area for executive session. We do need an executive session tonight, and the reason for that is printed there on the Board Doc's agenda. And we need to invite Dr. Cobb's to join with us.
Mr. Robinson.
And Mr. Robinson.
And Mr. Robinson. And negotiating team members, how long do you think we need?
How long? 20, 30?
I don't know. I don't think it'll take very long. 20 minutes, maybe?
20 minutes.
Okay. If somebody would like to make a motion reading the recommended action statement for 20 minutes, including Dr. Cobb's and Mr. Robinson?
Madam President, I move that the board go into executive session to discuss teacher negotiations pursuant to the exception for employer-employee negotiations under coma, and that the open meeting shall resume at 8:40.
35?
Let's do 8:40.
Okay.
Somebody to unplug you and see if we can take you with us.
It was moved, wait, wait, wait. Don't unplug until we vote. Wait a second. Yes. So, it was moved by Linda Alderman and seconded by Susan Moore that we go into executive session for the reason under coma that was read. We'll just do all in favor. Please raise your right hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. That passes 7-0.
And it's 8:40 this clock.
Right. So, for those watching, we will be back at 8:40. Right, so for those watching, we will be back at eight forty. Right, so, for those watching, we will be back at 8:40.
Alright.[198.73]